So, here's the timeline. There was an application process that was open about a week ago. That application for this appointment seat in January 4th. On January 7th, the city council will whittle that down, have some interviews, and whittle it down to three candidates. That's on the 7th. And on the 9th of January, they will vote on who that individually is and who selects the field seat. And that person will be sworn in on the table. So, critical dates before the application proposes. The 7th is when the interviews occur and we'll whittle it down to three. And then on the 9th, a select P, and on the 10th, that individual will be sworn in. Are we clear? Are there any questions you had of the previous people? There are big enough? Okay.
So, why don't we talk of the candidates, you know, potential candidates on the campaign list, together, and why don't we be another one of the candidates that is considered a candidate for the election?
We don't know. I've asked any, and we've asked each and every body who was going to participate to announce and to be a part of the process. As you all know, some people make their own choices, okay? And this is a unique situation, and so those individuals who make their own choice, I'm assuming decided not to participate in this process, okay? But I'm sure that we're well aware of what we're doing.
As retired councilman Cruz made a commitment to support the recommendation of this retired community.
We have not asked the councilman that. Or what the lady that the councilman has asked me was if I had knew one or, you know, knew those names, could be able to make that recommendation. Whoever he asked that to, others, I don't know. But we, this committee has not asked him that question.
Well, will this committee ask him that question?
Well, this is a body of the community wants to finish. It's a deed that's the will and wish of the government community to do something.
Very good, Jay Robert. Very good.
Any other? How was notice of the first meeting? Because I didn't do it to you, but I already did a notice, I don't know. How was that information?
There wasn't official notice sent out on the first meeting, but there was on the second. The first meeting started with a group of interested individuals who said, "We need to get involved and engaged," like most issues start with small group people. And that's when that triggered the round two meeting, and here we are today in the round three. So, that can be a crucial. And I think all of us agree that one of the critical things we need to do in this one meeting is create a better line of communication so that that connect can be broader. That's one of the things that we hope our district councilperson will work on. It's a great, you know, I want to see too many young people in here. But we've got to focus on technology, and I've had some conversations with people with technology to really speak to how we can communicate better since we don't have mainstream freedom, okay? So, that's a great question. So, we're officially moving to our meeting. Our panelists would like to move them to the table. So, you got the, please have a board. Ladies and gentlemen. We need to have the table lit. We need it one. We need it one. Okay? Well, wait a minute now. I'm serious question. We have some time for the question. Is there questions of clarity? We're going to ask them quick, and we're going to answer them. Get the young ladies here, get out coming in.
I'm sorry, I didn't have a second now, this was sent out. How was that?
Now, we sent out the homeowner association there.
Okay, because I don't have my memory.
Okay. But we're working on our communication. Jordan, you need to at the table. You need to at the table. Mr. Tom, try to get another chair so we have our panelists at the table.
Is our place in office?
Well, they're facing this way because they're asking candidates questions. They'll be standing here, and they can ask those questions and look people through their big beautiful eyes. Okay? It's very important. I saw one of them, and I'm going to get into our meeting. No other hands, pray. There, we need one other chair tied up. You get it? Okay. So, as we're moving forward, we're going to have one meeting. Now, as I tell y'all always on the teacher, we need to put a book on it. We just volunteered you. You were the type. Yeah, you got your phone. You were the type. Love you. Step up. Oh, we got the type. Okay. Oh, she's making me laugh. You were the type. All right. So, now, when we started this process, there was 22 names of candidates. And they're made available. So, since that time, so folks have rethought and have really looked at this thing very closely. So, this morning, when we start the official process, which this market, registered Ray Hand market will be the moderator. And at the table, we have our panelists, which are individuals from the community. One of the applicants, one of the initial applicants, we're going to give her an opportunity for what we call a point privilege to talk to you about her initial application, engagement, and now where she is today. And that is Ms. Rose Hill from government.
Thank you, everybody. As many of you know, my name is Rose Hill, president of Government Hill Alliance. I've been in meetings for 25 years with the Methodist in the East Side. I've lived here all my life. Been very involved the last 25 years in education in the school district and very involved. I feel like I do have all the qualifications needed to run for this position, but I announced it at the last meeting, but I am withdrawing my name for the following reasons. I feel that I'm a very effective leader. I've worked along with the president of the neighborhood. And when we first initially started this process, that I felt as a president, we needed to come together and have meetings, to be, to talk to each other, and to be able to work together across a district too. And I, we had talked about having a coalition and started, so I was going to be heading that coalition for the East Side president so that we can all come together, that we can work together because we all have the same issues, street, life, sidewalks, development, everything that are coming into our neighborhood and crime. That's what we need to do. That's not a walk back. I'd like to have that comeback aligned and us start working together. And so, therefore, I feel that as a community leader, that's what I'm going to be more effective for the presidents and to keep open communication. The lady asked a question real quickly. How can we notify the first time? We did send it on Nextdoor on the East Side if you're there. We also publicize it on our Government Hill Facebook app on Facebook. We try to, and of course, provide the media and try to get as much coverage as we possibly can. But what I want you to understand is that this is a history of the East Side that never happened. And I want to thank Ms. Hoffman for taking the initiative to come together with us to help us facilitate these and to get the conversation started. And that's what we need to do. We need to keep that conversation started. We need to know that the next district councilperson is going to work with us and is going to lead us in the right direction because we, the presidents, are the ones that represent the community. And we have to have communication, and we have to have openness, and we have to be able to connect and be informed so that we can be effective bringing that communication back to your community. And like Ms. Hoffman said, that there goes three steps to process. We do know again that the city has the alternative to go ahead and make that appointment. But again, we heard from a lot of presidents and a lot of people in the community, they said, "We would like to have your voice. We would like to have some kind of input." So, therefore, that's how this meeting started. And I hope that we will continue here on the East Side to have these meetings because they are important. They're important for the future of this community, for our children, for our leaders, for the school district, for our teachers, for everything. We've got to come together. And today, let this be it on the East Side, that we matter and our voice matters. But thank you.
I want to be clear, Rose, so you're no longer candidate.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Let me be brave that I went on my candidacy because I will be running that coalition. So, I'm sorry, but thank you.
We don't want any cheating. So, we want to make sure. So, is that our panelists, Martin, you want to come in? So, Martin, prepare some questions. Our panelists also will be engaged in question and answers. So, you will have an opportunity to engage. But since we have a structured meeting, we want to make sure that everybody is respectful. First off, thank you for everyone coming out here on Saturday morning. First off, I'd like to thank Pastor Ser for giving us opportunity to have this and give sanctuary. A lot of people won't allow this, but thank you Pastor and the members of Dominion for allowing us to come and be in here today. So, we have a communication person. Volunteer. Volunteer. And this is the application, not the home service.
She don't want to ring. Good reason, and the Father will come first to say thank you for presence on this day of our country, of our state. The Father is there, the Spirit will be present, and decisions we made will be done in a communication, notification, not a meeting. But all that we do, we should always acknowledge you, that you do the honor and grace because all that we have has been given by you. And thank you for bringing us thus far, ways that you continue to be effective in our community. If you is named a sovereign, can I say amen?
Amen. All right. So, thank you, Ms. Rose Hill. Before we get started, we need to find a lady out for the round two. First, set your phones off. Make sure that they're not blowing off. If they are placed on style, you might want to place them on vibrator, something like that for the digital server process. Second, don't interrupt anyone. If they have time to speak, give them an opportunity to speak, and we'll make sure that everyone who wants to speak will be able to speak. Number three, be respectful. We don't always have to agree on everything. Sometimes we just have to agree to disagree and keep moving. For all of those of you, and hopefully, we're all going to continue to act like a double out of this process, kind of getting amen. Hey, yeah, you are right. So, first thing we're going to do is we're going to have an introduction to interview panelists. Introduce yourself. Give them time to introduce themselves.
I'm Keith Tomlin. What, George?
Lester Bryan. Jordan Lee. Good morning. I'm Sister Gabriella, over in Holy Spirit Sister, and the neighborhood council of the Metro Alliance.
Thank you. Now, we're going to have an introduction of the district two applicants. Each person will be allowed to open a statement for more than two minutes.
Let's start with Lori Brown. Go ahead, Lori.
I am Lori Brown, and once again, I'm here standing for you, looking at Redford District two, seeing how the person. Merry Christmas to all, and welcome to the tournament. I have a house full of out of town guests. But once again, as before, I love District two. I've been here over about 27 years. And I know, and I believe, everything that happens in District two personally affects me and my child. And I always feel that, you know, I want the best for me, and I want the best for those around me. And I believe as, that we can always work together in making things better, not for just one person or one thought, one focus, one agenda, but for all of us. In running in the previous race, it was really interesting to go to different areas and see what their priorities were. Some were worried about crime, some were worried about just jobs, some were just worried about nobody, you know? And whatever issue affect that person, that's important to them, therefore, that would be important to me, you know? Because I'm here as a servant, you know? I'm here to serve others and not for my personal agenda. I don't have a personal agenda. I just love serving the people. And so, therefore, once again, I'm here willing to give myself and make those sacrifices in my personal life to look out for the people in my district. Because once again, those things affect them, affect me. And so, I would like for you all to consider me in this as I consider, you know, even serving the people and being there for them. So, if I don't like whiners, if you have issues, bring your issues forth, let's sit down, focus on resolution. That's going to be a pay call. Thank you.
Thank you, brother. Brother Bill, raise your hands for candidates. Go give your time.
Yeah, I'll say 30 seconds so you know it's all right. I'm just a moment.
Morning. I'm the pastor of this church, thank you. Lord be a glory. I want to thank all my friends and family at District two. I'm a lifelong resident of District two. My name is Jerry Hill. I've served in the seventh of the private department for over 34 years when my public service started. I recently retired from private department, but I did not retire public service. That's why I'm making myself a prayer to you. Having been president of the United Black Populations Association for over 10 years, we've been in the schools and the community doing habitat work. I've seen the faces of the children in school. When I came up as a youngster right here on the East Side, San Antonio, we had summer programs and stuff. I'd like to empower them, give them hope for their summers to be economically empowered also, to help their families. One day, people will be recruited in such an organization as I did that has allowed me to make a living for my family, where I met my wife for 35 years in San Francisco High School. Our sons both graduated from San Francisco High School also, and they make their homes here on the East Side. This has been a proud district. I love being in this district. I serve this district. It would be my duty to continue to serve. Know it would be an honor to represent all of the people in this room whom I lean on. I see some of your faces here today who I may have to call them any time. I want to thank you for that person and public.
Good morning, everyone. Yes, my name is Lester Bryan. Born and raised on the East Side. Right away from San Francisco. Left the East Side, moved to Washington DC for about 20 years. We located to Atlanta and moved back here in 2008 because of my mom. And those were the best years of my life before she went on to be home with the Lord. But when I came back, I noticed that a lot of things on the East Side really happened from when I left in 1975. And I really got concerned about that, so started getting involved in the community. I'm the president of TAs San Francisco. I have a child in school, and that opened a lot of doors along the lines of education, leading people. I'm vice chair of the board. I've been chair on the national committee for transportation, involved with different city committees and all. But one thing I wanted to express why I'm interested in applying for the vacancy of District two is that over the next five to six months, the city of San Antonio will be making major decisions that will have a huge impact on District two. Those issues are housing, transportation, the firefighters contract, hospital selection of the city manager. And we're going to need someone in that seat that has knowledge and experience to have a, to represent District two. And of course, if we do not have a strong voice to represent the district in those discussions, then we're just going to end up getting whatever someone else decides that we shouldn't have. So, thank you for your time, and we will be proud to represent the district. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. Chris Dawkins said, "I would like to give honor to this church and thank you for everyone from up now." First of all, I'd like to say to you, I think it's very important to go through this process as we are doing right now. There are many things that are facing District two that we're going to have to be really, we're just going to have to look at it very importantly. Like Lester said, there's going to be a lot of things that are coming up in District two. Making sure that we get a city manager, making sure that the development that happens within District two, there are a lot of things that we have to look at. And I think that the city is going to go through a number of things that District two is going to be very important in. We've got developers that want to come in. We've got a new city that I believe is going to be happening as we make District two, very relevant to the whole city overall. And I think to be able to do that, you're going to have to have somebody that knows about business, that knows about community, that like Rose Hill talked about, we've got to make sure that we bring the community together with all the HOAs and make sure that people have a seat at the table in what it is that we're doing. When I talk about serving, I'm not talking about a person who's going into a seat to give their opinion as to how things should be. I believe that we come together as a community and we decide what we want to do together, and that's how we govern. In America and in the community, we have lost that. Politicians must understand that we serve you, not the other way around. We don't really go in there to give our voice. We go in there to be the voice of the people. So, our purpose is the voice of the people, and I hope that you will consider me. Thank you.
Good morning, Lori Brown. Yes, ladies and gentlemen, please be together at home. I'm not going to be very friendly, but I wanted to go ahead and just introduce myself to everyone who took your time. I'm sorry. I used to be a school teacher. I never had a high class. But I wanted to go ahead and just let you know that I've been a part of this community since 1980 when I was in San Antonio. I moved to the East Side, and I've been a part of the East Side, and I love the East Side. I'm part of the community because my parents are Baptist here. Some of you might know who's Dr. Howard Southeast National Hospital. We've invested in this community. We've invested in the people. So, I have a relationship with a lot of people in San Antonio. I hear their stories, I hear their concerns. That's one of the things I really want to emphasize with city council. I have that connection with the people. I serve the foundations. I give fundraising, work for the missions, the academic medical center, the medical center. We have a necessity and a need for help for mental patients, and those are issues that are very important for the East Side as well. Developers, yes, that's huge in San Antonio. I've worked with the HPRC. I've worked with DUMM. I've worked with different commissions, the departments of San Antonio. We need to have incubators in the East Side, just as they do in the West Side. These incubators create businesses, create knowledge, create that network of people that can help people who want to create the business in the East Side. Why can't we have any business here? We need it for our young folks. We need it for the people that are established and want to keep a legacy of their business for their children. Developers are coming in. We have S T R's. Some of you might not even know what a S T R is. Those are the R B N Bs. Those are the movers coming into neighborhoods. Those are increasing their taxes. I've met, I've walked people in our neighborhood. They are being forced out during this holiday season, having to relocate because they're going to sell their homes, or they've been asked to be. So, thank you. I have a lot more to offer, and more personal, one to one, so give me that opportunity to ask your question and help me have my next one. Thank you so much.
I guess I'm maybe an oldish of the 99 years of age, but I have a lot of experience still. I've been in District two for 56 years. I know what the Aces are, the drains, the streets that are poorly constructed and no storm raining, tankless, you name it. I know all of the issues that we have been faced with. And we always get the short end of the stick. We are the investors. We are the ones that should be getting some returns for our investment in the city. We lack so many things, and at the top of the list for me in the hospital, because I care about the health and well-being of our citizens in District two. We have a lot of things that need to be done, and I have a lot of experience, and I've done a lot of things in the community, and I'm going to continue to do it. I want to be able to go ahead and get things done. I don't play games with politicians. I know how to deal with them. And for the longest time, we had people that would go to college and would have to take remedial plastic because they came from the East Side, and the same with the West Side and the South Side when they went to college. The North Side didn't have to get remedial plastic, but I changed that. So, I don't play games, and I piss a lot of people off, and I don't care. I'm going to go ahead and be transparent as a fit, and I don't have any nonsense that I talk about. Thank you.
As you can tell, we've got a lot to watch. All right. So, we're going to get down to the nitty gritty. We're going to start with the questions, and because I'm hungry, I think I'm going to swing at first. All right. So, for our candidates, what will be your legislative priority or record priority if you are appointed and elected to serve District two as our next city councilperson?
How much time do we have?
A minute and a half.
Okay. Minute and a half, candidates.
What will be your legislative or record priority when you are appointed or elected to serve as our next city council?
For me, Chris Dawkins, it would be safety. We've really had too much violence in our area. When you look at the media, it is always a lot of the East Side that's going on, and I believe that we can solve that. One thing that Rose talked about, again, with the communities, when I talked to Chief McManus and I'm going DA, the hood, one of the things that we talked about is being able to do and look at safety. One of the things that they told me about safety is that a lot of the areas that are having problems with the shootings, with the killings, are those areas that don't have neighborhood associations or homeowner associations. Those are the things that I think that if we begin to bring people together, we can begin to look at that. It's going to be very difficult, but I believe that we can actually do that. But I also want to say something else. That person who is appointed, you only really have five months. So, I'm not so sure what can be done in a short period of time. What I'm looking at is a long range of plan to be able to look at after the five month period. So, within the five month period, I think that first of all, I would look at safety. I also look at development in District Two. I think development is very, very important. I think we look at development, people within the community as well as people who are outside the community. There are a lot of things that we need in the community. And I think if we begin as a community to look at it together, we can begin to solve some things. Thank you.
Well, I guess I'm back at school. That's what I'm gonna be telling you, honestly. I'm back at school. I would definitely go in there and ask for transparency. I wanna see the books. I want to know the projects that have been planned for District Two. How people have been achieved? How people are in the process of achieving? We need to know what can be discussed behind closed doors that we're not a part of. Talking about communication. We need to know what's happening. We don't have communication, either in English or in Spanish. Sometimes I have to leave my community to speak and translate for them. That's not my job, but I will do that if I need to, because the city is not being transparent. We know they have chip. Are you familiar with chip? Some of you don't. Some of you are changing it. I don't do any research. Do you know that you have money available to you right now? They just voted in November, and they waited until May to end December. But do we have that information? No. I'm doing my homework, and I'm gonna help you. I wanna find out what we expect and what we perceive from the city. So, we need to have that transparency. We need to have that open. So, yes, I'm gonna be doing my homework, but I'm gonna go in there. I literally love to watch YouTube. We have now cast records private meetings. If you're familiar with that, go in there and find out those meetings that have been broadcasting. And we're not free to. And we need to know why we're not at that table. That's what I wanna know. Thank you.
Well, the first thing that I would do is to go ahead and start a basic initiative and try to get four other council people to go ahead and sign an initiative to go ahead and have a study made on why we need a hospital out here in our district. We have clinics or health facilities. We need a full-size hospital with lots of beds to be able to go ahead and take care of our elderly, any citizens that might come up. We need a full-service hospital. And that's the first thing that I wanna do. The second thing is I would look at the books, and I've been doing. I've reviewed some of the audit material that I've requested. And there's a lot of money that is being hidden away, and it doesn't go into the demo. And that's the thing that the gangs, like the administration of the city, are playing. So, taxpayers are getting the short end of the stick. We're the ones who are providing the money, and they're giving payments to developers and people who are gonna be making money from our money.
Okay, this makes things a little bit easier. Yes. Not a problem. That's what I like. Problem solved. I know you asked about our regular regulation, but they said, this is a short period of time. It's a time to get in there and find out what's already in progress and jump on those things that you can complete that the community is already concerned. And those things that can't be completed, to let the people know why, where they're at in the process, and how we can move forward. Whether we continue to do a full term, or not, we'll be able to either continue in full term or make the transition easy for the next person. But right now, we don't want this to be a dead period of five months. So, my focus would be to get in there, find out what's going on, get on top of it, and make sure those things are followed through. And not just a whole bunch of ideas that are floating in the air and the possibilities of what can happen. As I said, those things that affect you all affect me as well. And I want to see this district that I have. I didn't grow up in this district, but I chose to move in this district. And I recently bought another house, and I chose to stay right where I'm at so that I can be available to serve District Two. People ask if I need to move somewhere else. I said, no, District Two is my home. And I wanna see us not be pimped out of place, but I wanna see us have the benefits that everybody else in the city of San Antonio has. Thank you.
Okay, great question. When it comes to policy, and we have, we all know that we have a lot of policies out there. The thing about the city council, the city council is legislated by. And so, when we talk about policy and governance, we have to understand that there may be existing policies, but there has been a lack of government, governments, or execution of the policy. So, like Denise Endor said, first priority would be to get, would be first to hear what is the number-one concern in the community? Is it safety? Is it housing? What is it to then get in there and start to evaluate the policy and see, does it need to be governed better? Does it need to be executed better? And then, whatever the case is with that policy, then you have to go to work and get the consensus of these five other council people to change the policy. The District Two person just can't say, okay, we're gonna do this. When you're certain of a council or board, you have to get the consensus of your fellow, your peers. And so, that's my solution to that. You have to evaluate. Then you have to take action. So, that's my thought.
Again, I'm very good at San Antonio Fire Department, recently retired, lifelong resident of the East Side. Just east of us is a corridor on forty-ten and thirty-five that has tremendous commerce going back and forth. Yes, safety is the number-one priority. We should regulate a lot of the going and coming on thirty-five and fourteen. That's happened to materials. I've been in the safety business. We can see what problems out there has caused, all kinds of detriment on that side of town that we never even hear about. We need to regulate some of the big businesses that come in this community and do work and not be held accountable. I think they could all give back. I mean, that person that's willing to knock on the doors, get opportunities for our young people. And as far as safety, for in the streets where our young people and elderly people can operate on a daily basis, we have to empower those people. Economic growth on this side of town systematically will affect some of those issues. I truly believe that good education, economic growth, and systemically will address some of the safety issues on the streets of San Antonio.
All right, so, second question. How would you ensure that there will always be open communication and open door policy with the community?
Community is key. Communication is prioritized. That's the only way you can operate with the transparency that's already in place. Needs to be executed and enforced. Communication always. By having regular meetings, HOA notifications, of getting to you in a timely fashion. You can block out time, come to your neighbors, and family and friends, communicate always.
Communication, I always have been a big part of my career in communication. One thing I've learned is that communication is not an area where one side sits on. You know, in our times today, we have social media. We have some people that are still in the, they feel most comfortable with face-to-face communication. And so, from a District Two standpoint, communication to constituents, you have to use all, as I call them, reaching out methods. Because you can't just say, okay, I'm gonna post this on social media, and everybody's gonna get it, because everybody's not on social media. You can't say, I'm gonna send an email for that, because everyone may not be on email. So, the telephone meetings, the social media, and then also the emails, those are methods to use. And then, sometimes, this may sound a bit old-fashioned, but sometimes, picking up the phone, calling somebody, or being out in the community where people are out and about in their everyday business, and just talking to people. You know, we got to a point in our society where we don't talk anymore. You know, we rather text. You know, we prefer to send an email. We don't wanna look in someone's eyes and talk to them directly. So, to be effective in communication, you have to use all those methods at the same time. Thank you.
One day, it says a lot of politicians, and I'm a servant. Serving God, serving other people. Been a business owner, seven years I worked for state rep with Joe McQuillan. And in those positions, you understand that you're there for the people. And communication is a very valuable thing. One of the things that has to be thorough, direct, and consistent. You know, and because of what I do now with taxes, people are, everybody don't wanna go pay for it. There's some people still with their tax return and paycheck and holding it under their sign. And you have to be able to be flexible in all those areas. And the councilors would take care of all of them. So, when you have a staff, you have to make sure the staff understands they're there to serve the people. They can get paid, you know, and that's their job, but their job is to help you serve the people. And I've experienced that lack of communication. So, one thing I always make sure of is first, I communicate with them. And then, I communicate with the people, or I make sure the people get the proper communication. And if it's somebody who's not tech savvy, social media savvy, how can we get the information to them? I want the people to know, hey, first of the month, you're gonna get a letter, and it's consistent so they can look forward to it. If it's somebody who needs a call back, we will call them back. And we try to do all that. So, communication is very valuable.
Thank you, Chris Dawkins. This is an area where I think I would like to think that I excel. What we need is what Rose said, is people to be engaged. We've gotta get our community engaged. So, the communication for me means making sure HOAs and neighborhood associations are working together. We've gotta get those people who are in the neighborhoods to make sure that they're working with each other and working together as a neighborhood. And to do that, I think Rose, when she talked about originally, talking about forming a what I call the community congress, where all the communities get together on a monthly basis so that the ones that are here can understand what's going on with the other ones in other areas. And in that way, you're also able to find out what priorities may be. But I also think this is a two-way conversation. Because when you have communications with the HOA, you do have seniors and other people who may not be able to get out to the HOA meetings or may not be able to engage in that way. When they're not able to engage in that way, then I believe that that's where Dory talked about calling the office. You've gotta make sure that people who are calling the council office, that they make sure that they can get their questions answered, and somebody calls them back. So, that communication for me is two ways.
Okay, I guess I'm gonna have to go ahead and explain that, yes, I have a community network to have a community in District Two website. And we do meetings on Monday. Easy. We have a calendar on our own cell phones. There needs to be a calendar for District Two. We need to know where the staff is going to be so that the people of this district can go to them. There's no excuse that they can't answer the phone. If they're gonna be out of heat, if they're gonna be in a neighborhood, you know they're there. You don't have to go onto that neighborhood. You could still attend. It's an open meeting. Go there, meet with those employees and representatives of District Two. Now, a calendar leads to something else. Call the home to incorporate with the children of this district. Go to the schools. Go to the attached, we have several of them here. So, we need to know what's happening in the home life of these residents. Whatever's happening there will live in the home life. If there's issues with their homes, issue with their employment, it will be an attractive situation if we can go in that dialogue with the children and their families living in those homes. We have to have dialogue. We have to have communication. I can't read minds. I'm sorry. I'm not conditioned. I have to know what every one of you has concerns about. From the youngest to the oldest, to the seniors in housing, seniors that need housing. People are being moved out. We need to know where the displacement is gonna affect them. The city needs to be involved with that. We are having displacement. We are creating our own homelessness. So, thank you. We just have to have a dialogue.
Yeah, we need an open door policy. A council person has nine staffers, eight staffers, that are supposed to be out there behaving with the community. And they shouldn't have to, the residents of District Two shouldn't have to make an appointment with the community. It should be available to them all the time, not just when it's convenient for the council person. You know, this is a full-time job, and you should be there available to the public. And you have to be able to let the public know also what the issues are. It's a two-way street. But the main thing is, when people have concerns, they want you to do something about it. And that's what I have always done with the Eastern Triangle. We meet on a monthly basis. And the neighborhood association leaders have the opportunity to go to the meetings and voice their opinions and their concerns, and we should be able to act on them. So, it's important to go ahead and be available to the public. Not on your terms, but on their terms. Thank you.
Okay, we're gonna sit down now. We have our candidates. And I see there's a wide audience. Make sure that we don't make a mess. We may, then we'll get ready. Now, we're gonna let the panelists offer one of the questions to the candidates.
I'm Sister Kate Pial. I've lived here in the East Side, also started for the last thirty years. In terms, man, I listen. In terms of education, how are you going to work with the schools in the district? in the district? When are you going to meet with the principals of the schools?
Well, yeah, it's a question for me. Well, okay, uh, well, like I said, we have to have an open door policy. Uh, I've, uh, worked with James Howard, uh, on a continuing basis on this campaign structure, and so, uh, I understand it needs to go ahead and be involved with the schools. And, uh, and with Howard right there, uh, Howard, I have been engaged with, uh, meeting with them in, in concert with, uh, Mr. Howard. So I am very, you know, concerned about what happens in the schools. And, uh, so I, I know that Sister Camilla has been involved in our community because that's a long time with the cop organization and so on, so, uh, you know, this is the thing, we have to address all of the issues of these children, especially because they're our future leaders, and it's important to go ahead and be able to guide them, um, to do the right thing.
Okay, I have some convenience visits, and I start a phone call in. I tend to walk in and fix myself and start asking questions. I wanna know what they need. But it's not just school districts, it's the boys' and girls' club. That's a huge part of this community. We need to know what happens after school. We need to know what's happening with pre-KSA. We need to see this effect, and why else is needed for that department? I'm lucky not to know some people that work with that pre-KSA. It's a wonderful opportunity. Maybe it used to be tweaked, maybe there's some really great managers that can expand on that. But really, what we have to do is not only deal with the pain in school district, but those opportunities that we have for the children. If we need more, let's think about it. Let's work with the communities, let's work with the different areas of town. We have a facility down the street, a beautiful park, excepting, why can't we have activities in? Why can't we have sporting events in that include all the prom schools, idea schools? Because no longer, our K-TAC is going into a school district, but we also have prom schools, boys' class and girls' class. So it's an open situation for all the community to get involved. Thank you.
Um, my answer to that would be, uh, I would love to get involved with the schools, but unfortunately, the city council does not really get involved with schools. What we can do is maybe add some influences, as what happens with schools. Um, we have a hundred and seventy thousand people in District Two, and we have twenty-nine percent have high school education. We have twenty-one point nine percent have less than a high school education. These are the things that I think that I could take to James Howard, that I could take to the school system and say, how can the city help you? How can we begin to put programs in District Two to be able to help that? Because we cannot track businesses if we don't have people who are educated. So my short answer again is, city council, Rose doesn't get involved in schools, but we can do things to support the school system. Thank you.
Um, once again, my name is Dory Ruff, and I'm a member, just come in. And as a parent of an elementary student, I've dealt with private school, charter school, and public school. And if there's any way that the city council position can be an outlet of communication and connecting resources to help the schools, that's something I would look to. We have several districts, so if we need to reach out to the board first, bring the board and the principals together, you know, have a collaborative workshop of what the city can offer, what the state resources are, we can do that. Um, we're actually having a meeting with the board, we're having a board meeting in Central next week about, um, the staffs being armed. Um, unfortunately, our time may have come for some of that. But we have to make sure we have our focus on education, safety, and whatever resources may be out there. I've seen the quality coming from a private school going to a public school, and it was rather disappointing, even to the point of how the teachers relate to the students. And so I would try to gel that because that's their foundation of who they are.
My name is Les, and one thing I remember when I was at the PTA San Francisco, also chaired the ESA 2020 Commission on Education, is that what the challenge that we have with education is that we operate in silos. You know, we have seventeen school districts, then even within the districts, everyone has their own little territory, and people are very sensitive about collaboration. And one thing I've always talked about is that we need to put aside these differences in territory and just think about one thing, what's best for our kids and their education. And then from there, we just make it work. And the city council person, as Chris said, is, doesn't have influence over them, however they can lead the discussion and bring the people together. Thank you.
Again, I'm Eric Killian, resident of the United Black Firefighters Association. And one of the first things we did is address the need for scholarship. This is one thing, uh, we've gotten into six different schools within the city, uh, District Two, where we're mentoring to over eight different young men's groups. We'd like to expand that to young women also. This is somewhere that can make a difference. Being in a dating life in school, getting, getting, uh, the problems early that they're facing, because again, you can't wait, this is what we stress to young people all the time. Education is important enough that you should even leave as a senior already have a professional college education. Save your parents a year's worth of tuition fees in that regard. Again, we have big business operating in our district, uh, industrial court just east of us, they have to be held accountable. We need more internships, exposures to our young people. Everybody wanna go to college, they can start a work and make a career, a good career in some of these businesses that are operating in our district.
Good morning, Joy. Um, so if you could please, um, tell us what experience or tools and successes you've had in bringing development to the community, um, both, uh, commercial and housing?
Joy, I think that, uh, within the Eastern Triangle, we have been addressing that problem, uh, and we have, uh, we stop to the community, uh, in a number of ways, and so it's important that we continue to do that. But we have to be able to be engaged and not just talk, you know? There's so much talk and no action, and that's the thing that, uh, I have been tired of, just people voicing their concerns and, and, uh, not doing anything. Uh, I wanna see some action, and, and that's what I'm about. I'm, I'm not looking to build a political barrier or anything like that. Uh, my life is, uh, coming towards a man, and I wanted to be able to continue to make a difference, and it's very important to do that. Thank you, Joy, for the question.
Okay, we're talking investment, financial, are you referring to, or?
Promotion and housing.
And housing. Well, have pride in it. Um, I'm out of developments, I'm an investor. I'm an investor in my neighborhood. Uh, thirty years ago, my husband invested in buying some homes that nobody ever wanted. They spent money on the weekends after work, babbled with trace people, gave them jobs. We worked with the farmers, we worked with the electricists. We wanna keep the jobs here, that's the investment. We work with the community, get those homes fixed, rerunning. Some we actually sold to our neighbors right now. Some of our tenants, we helped them get homes in our neighborhood. That's the investment, that's a personal investment in our neighborhood. We help our families, we help our neighbors, and we help the other people who have a small business get better and larger and keep it growing, keep it, keep it going. That's the life of it. So I'm not a developer, I'm not a developer, so I get homes as soon as I can. I'm a small investor with a favorite dream for our neighborhood. Thank you.
Um, I've been involved in, uh, being with a CDC, Community Development Corporation, not here in San Antonio, haven't done much with housing here in San Antonio. But what I do wanna say about housing in San Antonio is that as communities, we know that housing in San Antonio, there is not enough. And there's gonna be a lot of low and moderate income housing being put in every neighborhood in San Antonio. So all of us, especially communities, have to get involved because those communities who are not involved, they're bringing low and moderate income housing to your neighborhood. As it relates to commercial development, I was president of, and currently still president of Lakeside Neighborhood Association. We had what we called the Big Meeting. There are several of you in here who were at the Big Meeting. We had about three hundred people at that meeting. We were Quick Trip, who is on eighty-seven, who bring the lowest gas prices to San Antonio. We also have H and B, who's coming to the building. Okay, um, there's a lot more that I'd like to tell you, time commercial development.
Make it quick, I'm not, haven't been a part of, actually, really developing. As a previous business owner with a county business, I took to have my business here in District Two and employed people within this district. Um, and looking for a place to, to have my office, I saw that coming from West Side, West Side here, it didn't have as many options, and that's always concerned me because people have to have the resources of having their location, having their offices, that, you know, are, are nicely feel safe. I mean, every time I was in my office, there was one that took mine in the morning, you know? And so therefore, you would make sure you have those, that they're not limited, and they're not, I mean, I had somebody come to my office and say, oh, I didn't get anything this night from here. I was in the, um, and it was a concerning feeling at the time. And I was like, what do you mean? Just 'cause it's the East Side doesn't mean that we don't have nice things. And that's always been a concern of mine, being in that position, that would be something that I would make sure comes here because we do have things to offer in this district.
Um, Les, pardon me, I was a part of the planning group for the Eastside Promiscuous School. There was a group of us that worked very hard to submit the planning grant for the Eastside Promiscuous Neighborhood. And then when we, so when San Antonio received the grant, then I was a part of that committee to also implement the process of it, so that's your commercial development.
Eric Killian, resident of District Two. Again, uh, one of the first things as a member of the United Black Firefighters Association, we got involved, had a tactic in that, and that was one of the ways that we could make a difference. Uh, it started out with just the annual march of the down rail cable, the up and up, the restore, and that was a short-term thing, but we took it and reverted and continued to do this year out. Then we expanded on that and sought a way to expose that young man to a way to have the working skills that they can use anywhere in life, wherever they choose to settle with themselves. With the government, Dr. D. out of San Francisco, we were hoping to expose some young men to the skills necessary, the one they build their own homes, have their own dream house. Uh, all that I have, I can lean on a lot of like United Black Firefighter, brother son who hit the Navy, and again, the school that we're in, giving us access to make a difference in some young lives.
Make it this quick, 'cause I'm gonna have any questions, just be prepared. Uh, thank you for coming together, because really, if all of you serve, we got, we got the team, right? So, having said that, um, I've heard some things regarding influence, I've heard some things about evaluating, I heard some things about five months. You need to be smart getting in the door. Wednesday, one of you is going to be a community consensus, and we've come to that today. So, having said that, we're talking about economic development in regards to how transportation fits into that, all right? And, uh, basically, let me give you a little quick scenario.
What's the question?
I'm getting to that, sir.
No, just a question.
All right, so, all right. So whenever you get to live with me, he has a car, he can get a job, he gets a job in blue collar industry up on Littman, which is a better getting job than over here. Two buses. Job starts at six o'clock, he has to land.
What's the question?
Please deny him that question. Jen, just give me a minute, I said, all right, Pete, come on now. We have to go with scenario-driven questions. It's a complicated job. Okay, job starts at six o'clock, first bus doesn't get in there till six fifteen. She gives him latitude and then pulls him back, he's gotta be there at six o'clock. Can't be councilperson, how do you engage that employer to recognize that until we get adequate level of transportation? That kid needs to be fifteen minutes late to be on time. Work with me on that. Come on.
Thank you, David. That is, uh, like a three, uh, you know, three of situations, but, uh, we do need to be able to provide transportation for those working people who don't have vehicles, who can't afford the insurance that goes with it. And so, uh, they do need transportation, and, uh, they can't afford Uber to go ahead and provide that, so it's important that we work with, uh, transportation, industry, uh, transit and so on, uh, to be able to go ahead and, uh, work out a, uh, the area where people need the transportation the most. And so, uh, in the past, I have proposed to the transit board, uh, and to, uh, the alamo, uh, plan, uh, to go ahead and consider subway systems. Uh, and, uh, they indicated that, uh...
One minute, Scott.
I have a question. Um, Liz, it's amazing because I went to a meeting recently and VIA, uh, one of the VIA directors from their department was in tennis. He didn't take the VIA bus, he drove there. So what I would like to see is the departments of VIA we're meeting for actually have a department that will have their representatives get off their own VIA bus and take those routes where we know there's a necessity in transport, to provide transportation to the workers of the city, the students of the city who also take VIA. So we need to have a special group of VIA buses to go ahead and take those routes, see whether they're efficient. Go ahead and do a very wide system because we are gonna need it, but they need to go and walk and go to town. They need to take that VIA bus and see what everybody else needs from that program. But one second right now, thank you.
Liz, very complicated question. Um, I don't really have an answer for it right now, but I will tell you this, I have been working on transportation. Um, since I only have a few minutes, I've been working on transportation for seniors. Um, I sit on the joint commission, Bear County, City of San Antonio, and I have two of my commissioners here, Barbara and Betty, if you would stand and just wave your hand, these are two of my commissioners that serve, you can give them a round of applause and serve. Uh, we've been working on transportation, whether it be bringing that Uber, relating that order, and how they begin to transport their people. We're looking at different ways that we can do that. So we are addressing your question, but I don't have an answer for you right now.
Thank you for the scenario. I think, make progress with how we've been...
I think, make sure this is how we engage with that company about the person's time. Um, I took the VA bus back when I was in high school. I've taken it at other times. I've been in other cities and I did San Antonio compared to other cities. And it's, it has a great uh, public transportation system when it comes to the bus and comfort and why, and all that stuff. And one of the things that is being engaged with that employer directly that you have a person who wants to work, who's doing their best to get there in a timely manner. And it's known, there should be a little way to adjust their schedule, whether they cut their bus shorts or they stay fifteen minutes later, you know? But in a time when we want people to have jobs and be there so they can provide for their family, I don't think that's too hard to ask of that employer and make they have a set group where they can have some standard time schedules. And you don't have to ask and talk to them and encourage other companies to do that as well because of the bus system, which is beyond their control, but it's there and they're taking it.
Great question is, um, having served on the VA board and the national board, transportation is a very... It's not complex, but they, uh, transportation authorities use formulas to decide how they're gonna have their routes and the frequency of their routes. I know that VA and Connect they're saying right now are working on a plan to make transportation better here in the city. But the one thing I noticed when I was on the VA board, and it's gonna get real, is that when VA puts out a notice for community meetings to get community input, very few people show up. So if you don't show up and you have a challenge, then...
Can I say anything about it?
Because if you didn't show up like you did to voice the opinion, and authorities need the input because a peritransit authority in the country gets money from the federal government based on white issue.
That is a great question. It's a good problem to have. Having a job, I think, I think once you have a job, you can work from there. Uh, VA does a couple of that, right? I think it's just something that can be improved upon. Maybe it sounds like an individual problem that he's had, but I'm sure it's a problem that a lot of people... A lot of people that may have the same issue. And something good you work out there. And I was thinking more in the way of him being an exemplary worker, he could approach the employer and see about standing fifteen minutes long an issue that he could work out there as a problem.
Thank you, Josh.
If he's there fifteen minutes late, state that he's in the long work to lunch. I mean, I know when people that have that are gonna work catch two, three modes of transportation. These are people that made it away from me. So, again, I look at that as having a good problem to solve. Okay, so uh, so this may do some of the questions and answers. Uh, my question is, how do you plan to involve the residents in the decision-making concerning District Two? A lot of decisions are made and many of the residents feel left out because they don't get the correspondence until they get it after the fact. So how do you plan to involve the residents in the decision-making of District Two?
Thank you, David. That is a very good question. We need to have an open door policy. We need to be able to engage them. Uh, and you don't go ahead and schedule appointments for them. They can make their own appointments with you. And so, yes, you have to engage with them. And once they do know the AC, and I'm very familiar with the AC, we cannot have brains now. Uh, we're in, in many different areas and uh, the eastern triangle was set up for that person, for them to be able to support the decisions that neighborhood associations make and to be able to support their decisions. So you, and the councilperson needs to go ahead and uh, also support those recommendations that come to them. And not be able to go ahead and, and, well, I can't find a phone. Okay.
I just, I just wanted to ask a question. Didn't we already have that question before?
Yeah.
Okay, are you, do you have a comfortable answering that question?
Yeah, we got it. They need a comfortable answer.
Well, we, we should, we should, right? Are there any questions that come from all of us?
I'm gonna make sure that we are not gonna ask questions from one other.
That should be the last question.
You like to continue the same question or...?
Same.
Well, yeah, we shouldn't have dialogue. Um, well, okay, repeat the question again, sorry. Trying to engage the community of your office.
In decision-making.
In decision-making, you know, like that? Okay, decision-making. Well, actually, what we have to go ahead is make sure that we're all on the same page. Um, that's where the neighborhoods need to be able to communicate with the residents, not how close we do in their neighborhoods. We have issues like that throughout our district. We have to make sure that our neighborhood associations haven't been infiltrated by developers. We want to hear from your residents. We want to hear from the homeowner, the tenant. So we need to make sure that that dialogue from them is gonna get to the office, to get to the staff. So we need to have a special meeting. We can have one here with Zoe and make sure Mr. Head is there. And I'm waiting months before we actually speak to him and the district regarding an amendment that's gonna be going to the HBRC or to Zoe. We need to have that communication because if you don't want something happening in your neighborhood, you need to be able to voice that to your district office before that vote happens. Because governments need to have initiatives that will vote first, then to the city council. So we need to make sure that we're all on the same page. Thank you.
Um, I think that we have a organization like this and that you've got community organizations. Those community organizations, whatever issue comes up, the council, if you have time, you can take it to the community, see how the community finds. The person who's sitting at the seat is actually supposed to be serving for the community. If you're serving for the community, then you find out what the community wants. That's how you're gonna affect the decision-making. If that person takes that information from the community, then that is the community making the decision.
But step one um, would be to reach out to all the communities. Probably the best way, kind of one fashion way, is make it look like a simple mail-out, postcard, or pay postage to all the residents in the district. Have them fill out, how do you want me to communicate with you? Would you prefer mail? Would you prefer a newsletter? Would you prefer social media? You know, and give them the option of saying, "Your four ways of connecting to the people, are you part of the NAQA?" And then actually, re, um, get that information back. Then you can kind of say, "Okay, these people, maybe they're older, they want stuff mailed out. They want the newsletter mailed out. Or they want a survey mailed out to them that's prepaid postage that they can easily fill out and mail back because you want to hear from them." So you're gonna have to make it simple for some people. If those people are more text savvy, if they'll respond to a text or something, you can put that up there and send out that text flash or email flash that has a way to respond by survey. But first, you gotta do something really basic and simple that connects to all people, and then they'll send it back. You know, you've done your part to try and connect to them as well.
Great question. Uh, decision, in regards to decision-making in the district, I believe that the residents of the district have to, and along with the city councilperson. First is to have a strategy. We need to have a strategy for the district. What is District Two gonna look like five years from now? Ten years from now? And then start implementing that strategy because the residents, the homeowners associations, and everyone is in sync together and along with the councilperson. And this allows the councilperson to start implementing policy changes or new programs for to execute that vision for District Two. Because if there's a vision and everyone has participated and shared that vision, then that's your decision-making process.
Again, Garrett Killian, lifelong resident. And being a lifelong resident, you should already have an idea of what affects your friends and neighbors also affects you. So with those thoughts, you lean on the very people that have already had people at meetings, HOA. These are wonderful people that you can go to and get the sentiments of all your friends and family and neighbors. You don't have to be in head to head. These thoughts have already been out there. You have to engage and keep an open door policy, as I said earlier. Welcome their ideas. Be about that all the time. These are the very people that are sending you that attention to be a voice to them. Keith Tony, uh, again, this is from the, from the audience. One big, uh, District Two has a challenge without funds are distributed by Sage. That said, what type of abatement can you campaign for? Would you campaign for in support of business, small businesses, specifically black businesses? I.e. grants, tax evasion for the first three years, et cetera. I need to repeat it. Good question.
It is a good question. Uh, first of all, the councilperson has to remember who they're representing. And they're representing the residents and the voters of his district or her district. And so, it's important that we go ahead and not have favoritism to a business that uh, may want to invade us. Uh, what about the homeowners? You know, they're having to pick up the slack. And so, it's important that you remember who you're representing and make a, a fair and, and uh, decision when you vote uh, uh, in support of whatever uh, the uh, the problem is. You have to be able to solve the problem equitably. And so, uh, that's the way I look at it, you know?
Uh, when I started at the beginning, I'm a chief incubators. Um, incubators are extremely important right now. We have one in the West Side called Yersa Sentinel. And it's an incubator for startups. People, individuals who just want to start with their idea. Learn the basics. Learn how to work with bookkeeping. Learn how to network. Learn how to use the internet. Get out of there. Get your name known. How to go out and get a bid with the government, a bid with the city. We need an incubator in the East Side. We have Sage, but it can go beyond Sage. It doesn't have to be just down the North, uh, Rockland area. It needs to expand. And an incubator is gonna create just wonderful results if we look at it the correct way. Use what we have, use the knowledge that we have, use the current business owners right now. See what they want. And what type of people, what type of businesses do we want to encourage to come to the East Side? Not just HEB, not just Amazon. We have a whole area on the East Side that's ready for development. And that's all we have to look forward to. Thank you very much.
Great question, Keith. May not have my answer though. Uh, I think that Sage needs to be changed completely. Uh, I haven't been satisfied with the work that Sage has been doing just to give facade grants. Uh, it's not what I see a CDC for our, our area to be doing. We need a development corporation. We need somebody that's gonna help do planning. We're gonna need somebody who's gonna help to also assist with MLK. Make our June Team March not a, and I hate to say this, uh, a small thing, but we are towards city. We need to do more. I expect more of Sage. If I'm the councilperson, Sage will change. Sage is going to expand. There's going to be a new type of Sage.
Well, the previous business owner teaches always for improvement and open ideas. Uh, one of the things, um, I was always going to be quite hard on business owners, that you need to come with your A.A. Just saying that to a president of a company, you got this, that. That doesn't mean anything to me. I want to see what you're doing and how your business is giving back in the process of you offering a business and that you're offering something that shows our young people that you can step up and be truly successful and that's not just facade or that you have to go on. And so that, um, we need to kind of reach back to our young people, our teenagers, our high school. As a former member of the National Association of Women Business Owners, we have a program that taught young girls to think about having a business of their own. Um, what's the name of the program? About writing the business plan and see that they can see other women business owners and they can have the focus of, hey, I'm gonna leave high school and go to college to focus on business. Thank you.
Well, I guess I'll have to be the, the back guy here. Uh, in my different roles around the city and working in the community, the one constant that I've noticed and, and I'm just gonna be honest, there are a lot of programs out there. There's a lot of grant money. There's a lot of city and county opportunities. And I think you also mentioned specifically for black businesses. The reality, and even with Sage, is that Sage was set up for all businesses on the East Side, not just specifically black, specifically black businesses. But here's the other thing, and I can use some applications and other roles in that, when we go to the table, we need to ensure that we have dotted our eyes and crossed our chutes. Because it's not about a black, white, or... We have to tell ourselves that to stop having the entitlement mentality that just because we're black, we show up, we're gonna get the money. We have to do the same thing and everybody else is gonna get the money. Thank you.
Garrett Killian, uh, competition is, is helping. We need more than one business model. You may have been saying once before, but I can't say that without stress on that. We need more than one economic plan for District Two. We're starting in a whole lot of ways. We're behind. Our districts, neighboring districts three and ten, they're prospering and doing well. We need to catch up. We have a learning curve. We need more than one business model. We need to encourage a lot of business. We have people doing business who aren't being held accountable. I can't stress that enough. We gotta knock on those doors, engage them. Get our young people thinking earlier than they're seeing here in school about being on the doors.
Okay, now we're gonna get some questions from the audience.
Okay, this one's from the audience. If not chosen by the community as a viable candidate, will you actively support the decision of this community body?
One minute, Josh.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I'm part of the community, so I definitely would.
Yes.
I think all these people up here show, um, the, the yearning to desire to want to serve this community and I would support them.
Okay, this, this is a good question. We, we assume you can support the community, right? But will you actively support if you were not chosen?
Yes.
Give us a... That's strength in numbers, so yes, I would support that.
Okay, we have another lady in the background.
This is not a force, this is a comment. I am a part of the council for the Statehood Association. And we do hear a lot of talk and no action. I would like to see somebody that's in this community, be familiar with the community, that grew up here, that knows our people, that have compassion for us. This has become a dump site. My street has been dumped. On the end of my street, we want to have our community to look like other communities. We want somebody that cares about the community, that empathizes with the community, that still live here, went to school here, went to all the schools, from elementary through high school. We want to see somebody that has compassion for us.
Thank you for the comment. Thank you for the comment. Thank you. And your voice has been heard.
Someone else have, okay, we have a couple of questions up here.
Dee Smith, Dee Smith from Cleveland, Kielco. Earlier you spoke about the city making from the community. Now specifically, New Rockville, there's a project coming there. We had several meetings where we asked for our input. We gave them our input, and the city came back and did what they wanted. And up in that East Side. So within that five months, what would you do to help us make sure that we get what we want on New Rockville?
Can I respond to that? One minute. Okay. Well, I know that there's been a lot of decisions that have been wrong for not only our city, but our district. And I will go ahead and look into it to where I can overturn that decision by providing the information that people don't have and where the money is coming from. There's money that's being hidden away. They can come up with a figure and a half to void it and represent the people fighting against the firefighters. And they can come up with thirty-eight million dollars for the auto boat, the reimagining of the auto boat. There's something wrong. Where is the money coming from? And it's not budgeted, so where did it come from? No. You know, there's a lot of money hidden away that is...
Tom?
Thank you.
That's not it.
Well, I know, if there is, okay, come on. Well, I'm a neighbor. I think, we hope I'm very helpful. And I follow your website. I follow the conversation on Facebook and see what's happening. You have to follow each other. And what I'm going to do is I'm going to know where did it break down? Were you ever in a conversation? They say one thing. They do something behind the back door. And we make sure that we're going to be everybody accountable. We know what's happening with the things we do, Rich. We have to wait and see what the report is going to do. This is our home. We have a conversation. Not just a conversation, we need to demand that they listen to us. And work with the other district because they vote as well. And they can vote along the lines with us. Thank you.
Got a question again.
Forty-five seconds.
The most important thing to me to answer your question is, I know that didn't away heal is engaged. I'm looking for communities that are engaged. If you're engaged and you've already said that you're against whatever it is that they're doing, with every fiber in my body, I will go there and support you. I'm there to support you. If you are not with them, the association didn't away heal, I will not support you. And with everything that I do, I will try to stop.
I was saying, chiming in on that, talking about communication. And asking what do you mean, what you want, for me to serve you? And if there's some reason that we cannot do that at that time, I will come back and tell you. This is where it's at, this was in, I'm going to fix and correct it. And not just leave hanging on, they hear me. You know, because I don't want to be treated like that. I wouldn't treat anybody else like that. So I would come back to you and say, hey, this is the realization of what's really going on.
Indeed, great question. And you are correct. But what I know about that project is that it did just kind of fall flat. And the neighborhood was not kept abreast of what was going on. So one of my first things I wanted, what we need to bring that issue back up, find out exactly what the status is, and why you guys are not kept in the community.
Also, again, a strong getting to any idea is the best way to have a good finish. And in the getting of that, some convenience, well, you have to have some money to take at all times. There can't be meetings without you, without your voice, someone to represent you. So with that being said, you have to stay engaged, have somebody to take these people at all times before you even go to a vote.
I have a question. My name is Bruce Sedia, and I'm a resident of the Small Association. How do you plan to get involved with associations? And there isn't asking that question because sometimes you need to be the voice of the residents. Some of the residents don't have social media. Some of the, some of the residents don't check email or don't even have email or don't know how to type an email. So are you going to get involved with the homeowners association? Sometimes you have to be the voice of the community.
Well, the cabinet, the cabinet is very important. Any information, any meetings, any events forthcoming, if it aren't the cabinet, the cabinet needs to be checked daily, twice a day, whatever it takes. Engage, lock out, tie up, and show up, be accountable. Accountability, communication, all of those are important.
Well, I understand what you're, what you're asking. And you have to, like I said before, you have to be able to be open. You have to be able to be available. And you can go to possible individuals face to face and see what their situation is. Sometimes code enforcement will write up a property owner for any minor situation. Definitely able to stand up to that issue and go ahead and necessarily say to the code compliance officer, no, these are the rules, these are the facts. And you wrote up a violation that was not justified. Things like that do have to deal with the British Bureau.
Well, it's not just communication with the individual neighborhood associations, but I really want to have the associations communicating with their state officers. We need to make sure that our state officers also represent you correctly and communicate with the district. We need to know what's happening. There are persons on the street. And if they're not on the street, we need to get more of them out there. We need to make sure they have presence. So that's communication. We need to have that whole situation, where you have an officer that knows the neighborhood. They recognize them. They can spot them at the corner, ask them questions. Those are the questions we want to hear. And that's what I want to hear as well.
Ma'am, what's the name of your association again?
Calumsey Oaks.
Are you registered with the city? Yes. Okay. Then hopefully, as the lines go forward, you'll be registered with Liz. And those organizations will be meeting. Of course, if I'm your councilperson, we will be communicating with that group that will be meeting all the time. Thank you.
As I said earlier, we would, I would want to get with the residents on how they own the information to be distributed to them and how they want to be engaged with. So if it has to be written, if they're not emailed, sent, or whatever, then we'll address that as that. You know, we can do our best to be, to get that to them. We also need them to respond back, you know? And if it takes me coming to you saying, I try to be this person, you know, they had an issue and they haven't replied back, I may have to, you know, come to you to make sure that that person's issues are addressed. So whatever it takes between the staff, we will make sure that they're addressed.
Excellent question. Derek said, you know, it's important to stick up the calendar. But I can tell you that I believe in being engaged. And what I would work on doing is that make sure that either me or a member of my staff attends all the homeowners meetings, you know, within reason. There's context, you can't be in two places at one time. But I think that that's the effective way to stay connected. As well as have five monthly town halls, we need to bring everyone in so that we can have dialogue like this. And I think that's very good. Thank you.
So, okay, so my question, let me explain it first, and then I'll ask you a question. So in my forty-one years at District Two, it has been very, very clear that the city of San Antonio has an absolute inability to cut inside.
Amen.
Are you willing to, A, admit that because they're racist? And B, a man that, oh, for example, this man right there said, we don't have a hospital in District Two, but we paying taxes to the hospital. Sounds like taxation without representation. Are you, as councilperson, ready to have the gall in our back to approach the city face to face and let them know that you recognize them better? You recognize the city's racism against the East Side? And that you recognize it must be over immediately? Are you willing to stand up to the city and all their departments in that issue?
Great question.
Absolutely. I do not go ahead and play games at all. I raise issues correctly, and I don't accept excuses. I want results. And absolutely, I will go face to face with the city. And I will prove to them that they are in, in my respect, that they wrote up. And so I don't, like I said, play games. I find out the root of the problem and like the...
Let's respond quickly, because we're running out of time. And to be in this...
I just want to take a point of interest because we said we would be finished at eleven. And we want to check in with you if you want to all the middle on board. And for short hand, we do like all the middle on board to get your question taken. Okay? Well, we respond for thirty seconds, but we also want to give an opportunity for summation. And because our hope is, remember, we go on a short timeline in terms of when the decision is going to be made. And so if we are able to offer what we call a comprehensive question that really focuses on overall what the individual who's moving forward or do, I think we'll be able to handle a little better. Because all of us are passionate about individual questions. But I think at the end of the day, we've got to know who's the strongest candidate and/or candidates moving forward. So what I'd like an opportunity to do is put together a comprehensive question that encompasses a lot of things that people are asking and a lot of that has to do with what you, how you're going to make it happen. And then we move on to other questions that people want to say. But I do want to honor this time, and I want to honor the church. Uh, Reverend Stewart? Start, Reverend Stewart. The desire of the group is to stay long, but we don't know when you have a plan. But it's okay.
That's right.
So we're expecting fifteen minutes or thirteen minutes. Fifteen minutes, raise your hand. Fifteen, so we're going to the next one at eleven fifteen. Okay? So we're going to make sure of that.
Say, Representative Hawke?
I have, I have, say, I have, the gentleman who's had a question for a long time. I didn't see his hand up. So I'd like to, then I'm going to give you, uh, the entire question.
We have several people that have their hand up. So we're going to ask, hold up. We're running late, okay? I'm running, thank you. So...
You're not going to get it.
We're ready to do something that encompasses all the things we need to do and hopefully get these questions answered. This gentleman's a question that we're going to ask in a comprehensive question, which I believe is, how are you going to, just to get you to think about it, how are you going to build senses? I think based on what I'm hearing, is that no one councilperson can do this. We all agree with that. So how, if you are selected, will you build senses to make things happen? How you will strategize and build that senses? And if y'all have it correct? So who want to know that? This question, right?
How you doing? My name is Jerry, I'm part of the Veterans Association for Lord Henry Fairies. I have been there for like eight years now, about seven years. And I'm worried about the veterans that are being, having taken care of you in this district. You know, we don't take care of our veterans. We need to take care of our veterans.
Homeless?
It is, it's time. What's your question to the group?
You just want to bring it to them. Quick, quick, if you have, how will you take care of veteran issues?
Okay. So then I think the comprehensive question, we're going to modify it a little bit. When we were at our last meeting, there was a housing concern, a hospital concern, a veterans concern. So let's look at those issues of concern, how you will address. Will we like to give them the next three minutes to address the living of that? No, let's speak to the man.
Thirty seconds.
We're going to get to your question, man. We just tried to lose all the game. And what's your question?
My question, sometimes the city takes steps to bring in experts. And they often time to see things that we don't see. So in the case of those hard decisions, when the community is not in agreement, but you see it at the best of the community, how are you going to do it?
Okay. So comprehensive question. How are you going to work with your colleagues to get things done? How are you going to work with your colleagues to get things done regardless of what the issue is? Does that incorporate what you want? That's perception, the city's agenda, that's what he said? Well, let's say this. How can we change the perception? Are you okay with that? How can we change the perception that the East Side is a dumb ground? Okay? And how will you engage your colleagues to make this happen? Okay? Because since it's all a response, I was amended to have, we might have to do a chief exam by screen.
Really, you're a really big, I just another question. I grew up with a belt hanging on the wall in the living room. I like to rip it. I have one hanging in my house, so I'm not a criminal in any way. I have no problem standing up. As I said earlier, I'm a servant. I'm elected by, appointed by the people of District Two to serve District Two. And I believe that District Two has been taken advantage of in a lot of ways. And that time needs to end. And one reason that I've got into this, not as a power. And as he talked about having the experts come in, that's one of the things that we need. And then we need to take that information back to the people to their concerns of why things may or may not be getting done. And what needs to be addressed for those changes? Because we all have a desire to see things changed. We need to know what the steps are to make those happen. But coming in this short period, we need to see what's already going on and what we can do to achieve those things that are in progress that may be excellent.
First, the part about working with the colleagues to build the census. The one thing that I've learned over the years about being on boards is that when you want something and your colleagues have to support you, is that you have to listen also to their needs. It's a two-way street because you need their vote. If you don't get their vote, you can't accomplish what you want to accomplish. So you have to listen, and what you're listening for is that you're listening for common ground. Maybe there's something you want to accomplish that they have also, and there's support. Secondly, on the strategy, you have to develop, you have to work with the community. And the community has to be engaged. And one of the challenges is sometimes that people can recognize problems all day long and twice on Sunday. But when I manage people, I would always tell them, if you recognize a problem, we can work with that. But also come to me with a problem and a solution. Because if you can identify a problem, you can identify a solution because you know what's wrong. And so as your councilperson, this is me, the ammunition. Because one thing about, you can't go into a gunfight with a knife. And that's what happens so often.
Jerick Killian, I'm not a lifelong politician. Not going to strive to be somewhere else, so I don't have feelings that I don't mind hurting. But this is a voice, very, of the citizens of the East Side residents. District Two residents, just like I said before. District Three, District Ten, all of them are surprised. District Three, District Ten, all of them are prosecutors. There should be no negotiation. And my right is saying this is the last place to be done. We have to be done to the needs of the citizens and want quality of life. These are basic safety issues, quality of life right here. There's no negotiating for the future of District Two. Thank you.
Well, I'm amazed at knowing the issues that government council people have. And, uh, you have to be able to go ahead and recognize their issues as well as what your issues are. So, you have to build a consensus between them. Years ago, there was, uh, referred to six councilmen as a gang of snakes. Well, you know, it becomes they all have needs in their districts. And so, you have to be able to go ahead, be able to work with them. And I have worked with John Courage when I was on that, uh, College District Board of Trustees. And you have to build up, uh, and be able to provide, uh, the substance behind your issue to them and vice versa. So, that's the way you build a consensus, and you can rely on their vote to support you and maybe support you.
Okay. Guys, according to your form, game now. Do your research, look at your taxes. They want the, their tax revenues out of here. We hold it hard. So, we have to demand and expect them to give something for what we're paying for our taxes. It's actually proven and shown in our calculations that it's going to be three times more than the North Side. We have more value. We expect more return, and that's what I expect. I've dealt with the commissions. I've dealt with City Council. I've dealt with Miss Gully. She's actually kind of meeting with my group inside the chambers to find out why we are upset. We're upset because we're not being heard. We're upset because we're being over tasked and not getting anything for it. So, yes, we do have a power. They know me. I have not given that interview because they do know me. But I expect at least have an opportunity to make my voice heard at that interview. And that's what I was asking, and I saw my hope for representing me, to demonstrate and our future.
That's true. The thing you were asking about, what happens when there's something comes up, they cannot ask the community and...
I said, when the community does not agree with the decision, then you may see that the best outcome.
I'm hoping that the community at sometimes understands that decisions have to be made. And you try to make the best decision in the interest of the community. All the time, you, when you talk about working on consensus bar, you have to make, you know, you have to make, uh, compromises with your other people to, in order to get it. We may not get everything that we want, but we're going to get what we asked for. And next time, we may be able to get a little bit more. So, sometimes you may not get all that you want. And that's what I hope with building a consensus with all the community, we can understand. You can understand how I hope, and I can understand what you want. I want to listen to you to find out what it is that you want and be able to articulate that to the council. We will come back with some of the things that we need. We may not come back with everything we want.
That it?
The panel is one question, our first question.
Well, may I make a point of urgency? I've got to go to a clinic for dialysis, and I do want to make one statement, and it'd be very, very important. Uh, a couple of things I want to say. First of all, I want to give out a key tone and title of the night. So, you have one, this is, and this is a senior to the City Council, but he has a real wife, and he makes that to priority. The second thing I want to say is, I hope that all of you consider when you make your recommendation, that you consider a person who has for forty years given their life, their blood, and their soul to this community. And that's Tommy T.C. Calvin. I'd like to fall for his name on this list. He's interviewed for forty years. I have all respect in the world for these six people here. So, Tommy T.C. Calvin and his cohort are responsible for the Barbed Eye Community Center.
Thank you, sir.
And I want to call him and make that announcement.
This is a, this was a community question, actually several constituents outside, including outside. The bottom line is, City Council will vote our climate plan next April, okay? They're appointing someone to meet you, but before the May, the May 2019. That means whoever is appointed, even if they lose a neg, will get to approve or deny the proposed climate change. Let's help ourselves. How do we feel about that? Climate change, always is coming.
That's one of those things I address, that when you get in there, you have to see what's going on, quickly do an hour work, and try to find what, what the district feels. They make a decision where we have to listen to the experts to come in and make the best decision that's going to affect us individually as a resident of District Two. Because that decision is going to affect me. I'm not going anywhere.
Is that a conversation?
First, first, it was fifteen seconds and a second.
There is no question on that. Uh, the federal government has already put San Antonio on notice. Our emission rates are starting to go out of control. I would vote yes for the climate, okay? And I would expect all of the council members to vote in favor of that. That should be unanimous.
Uh, I would have to do some more research on this because simple votes will have repercussions for the community. How many here can afford electric cars? How many stations are we going to need around the city to create those charging areas for those electric cars? There's a lot involved with climate change. Yes, we understand you have to have a cleaner city, but we also have a financial responsibility for our community. We can't put those type of ramifications in somebody's budget. They have to be able to get around. They have to be able to get to their opponents. Thank you.
Well, I'm a progressive supporter of climate change, uh, because we, we do call climate change to affect our well-being. And so, absolutely, you know, I am a pro supporter, and I'm sure other councilpeople recognize that as being a major problem. Open ditches that we have, that have stagnant water, and all of that, you know, is in our history. And so, we have to be able to go ahead and effectively change it.
Derek Killian. This is, this involves safety of our residents just east of yours, a quarter that operates heavily emissions and gases. Rose Hill was part of a group I think that stopped the building of another dump site. These things emit gases also. You have to regulate all of these businesses that are already in an emission operator. You have to have tighter constraints, and that's where I've been professionals, uh, five hundred years, seeing some of the evidence of this. We have to tighten up on the account. I thirty-five, four-ten, that's a quarter, this is going.
Yes, I'm one of the team. I agree with you, and it's something that we need to be studying. We need, because we see the effects of the climate change in our city, in our state, in our country. And it's something that with all due respect, that until season, uh, studies and inform more information about it, I know what my personal thoughts are, but I cannot interject my personal thoughts into what's best for District Two. Thank you.
Uh, Rose Hill got a final question? Question for you. Do you walk position permanently, therefore, will you leave, will you want for reelection? Second part of that, do you have any current connections or relationship with the current council members or the mayor?
Yes, I will permanently. Will I have no connection?
Uh, I'm saying yes to the appointment, and also I have a relationship with all the council members and the mayor.
Yes, I will see for reelection, and no, I have no connection with the council.
Yes, I will be running in the May election, and, uh, the council members know me well because I am constantly complaining to that shit. The average spending of our money and so on. So, yeah, uh, I have a relationship. Maybe it's not the greatest, but they expect me to do it.
Yes, I'll be running, and the only relationship I have is, actually, just go to meetings. I go there to district meetings, to community meetings. I want to hear what's happening there. I want to know what's left out of our whole pursuit, what's left out in our community. That's the best way to do it. Just be an interesting little guest of your districts. Thank you.
Yes, I will be running in May. Uh, I don't have any connection with the council people. I don't know if they know me or not, but I have no connection with them. Does that answer your question?
One more question. Is anyone, is it just, yes, if you are, say yes. Is there anyone serving on any boards that the city has been filling in?
Yes, I have, uh, but in order to put your application in, all of us have to resign before they will take your application. So, I was on the joint commission for elderly affairs, and I had to resign. So, I am no longer on any boards or commissions.
Yes, I was on the committee last month.
Which one?
The gold state committee.
Gold state committee, oh, gold state.
Derek Killian had an affiliation with boards that I serve.
I don't have any affiliation with any board. Previously, at first on the voting commission, but a couple of years ago, when Sean took the position from...
I'm a member of organizations, not affiliated with any city government, tier one for the neighborhoods. And I've been asked to be a part of the 2020 plan, uh, because I should have been going to a second tier. So, next one I'm involved in, I want to know what's happening in the future. It's going to happen now, so we need to vote correctly.
Okay. My question to the, the Street Two panel is, when the city gets money and they look at the budget and they have a vote on it, how is the district person, councilperson, or councilwoman going to be with the associations to make sure that those line items are addressed in our neighborhoods first? Our streets, our sidewalks, crime, uh, lights, all those important things. Are you, are you, are you committed to come to the neighborhood association and find out what our issues are first? Financially, line item by line item, before our money's distributed, and if they're paying my bills? That's my question.
To be honest, I don't think I have to go to every organization at first. I'm going to go to lots. I'm going to see for sure why it wasn't given to every neighborhood, every side of the east line. Then I go to the neighborhood associations and find out why, how you communicate with your district. They're, that's the community to how you do research.
Thirty seconds.
Uh, yes, that's really...
Just a second. I think the question is, is confused here. What I'm talking about is when the City Council gets all the money, you know, have that money before you decide the councilperson to distribute out into the community, then include the neighborhood association.
Okay, I think I understand your question. Uh, yes, I want the communities to be engaged, and if they're engaged, they should know. In addition to that, anybody, if you want to serve on a commission or a board, if you were involved in a neighborhood association, if I'm your councilperson, yes, I want to see you appoint to those boards or commissions to be able to report back to what we're doing.
Uh, I've served with other boards outside of the city, uh, currently, but to your question specifically, uh, I know we have a lot of on the top there, want to follow up on what's that school and where that money is, and how it's being distributed, and any new ones that come in are expected to be distributed, and I would definitely reach out to the homeowners association, to the community District Two, and see where they fill the need is after we look at what we already have that works.
Rose, now are you specifically talking about the money that is allocated to the individual districts? And that, and so there's several programs, like there's the assistance program. Is that the funds that you're quickly talking about? Okay, uh, my understanding, the way that the grant program works is that if there is an amount under ten thousand dollars, the councilperson can direct those funds to a organization. Anything over ten thousand dollars has to, it requires council approval.
Derek Killian, engage me. The sweet wheel will be oil. The needs that have long been overdue will be met. We have to constantly stay engaged, communicate the needs of this community that have long been neglected. We have to get engaged. We will be these needs, like I said before. Our neighborhood districts are being prosperous right now. We have to catch up. We have to get all these needs met. There's no negotiation for District Two.
Thank you. At the end, we want to do two things here. One, the folks, the candidates, the applicants will be around. They do have more opportunity of individually to get it going a little better. In these type of forums, it's hard to get everything out there, called time. And yet we have so many wonderful candidates. It's hard to get everything done. Pat, I want to thank y'all so much. I wish I had one time to be more friendly. But what I do, what I think is important, Sister Gabrielle, do you have a burning question? Or do you feel that most of the things you needed to know was answered?
I have a burning question.
I'll give you a second. Go to the panel and get back to me.
I think, I do have a burning question, and it's this. When they stand up at the written address, stand up, and I'm, I'm logically believe like you all are going there, and I'm going to talk. And they're saying nothing, and they waste our time. I'm sure everybody watches the district, I mean, the channels everyone, the government channel, watch the City Council meeting, and I go down to, to, excuse me, being so loud, I'm not... You know, I go to the D session, and they repeat and repeat and repeat. They're not direct. So, I ask you, please, no, we're busy people watching that video, and we want to write ads. I'm sorry, I'm not...
Thank you, Sister Gabrielle. Let me get to the panel. Get to you now. Get to you. Uh, Joy, if there are any burning statements, we want to say a question. But as a leader in this community, is there a burning statement you want to give to applicants and the community here?
Well, I appreciate each of you, you know, making yourselves available, uh, to serve on behalf of your community. But, uh, these are very serious times. We have a lot of things that are already in the works that we can't lose ground on. And from some of the questions that were asked today, I think some of you, I'm not sure who's going to end up in it, but there's some education that needs to take place, and some of the questions were never answered. And we have economic development projects that are going on and that need to happen. And so, what if we could do to help you get a breath of those things? Uh, please lean on the community and please do your homework, because we don't have time to lose.
Okay, to bring you back off of, uh, uh, the other Joy, Sister Gabrielle and Joy. Uh, I listened to a lot. There were some, and we touched on it, but nobody said the burning thing. burning thing, when the next meeting was. No matter what, you should already know when you're going to sit down with us again. Is it the fourteenth of February, the twenty-second? Assuming that you win, when is your next meeting with all of us? We've been lagging for eighteen months. Thanks.
There was another question that came about the, uh, Martin Luther King. We know that they're coming up on Martin Luther King March again. Uh, I've noticed that some may have been cut out. Our young people need to stay involved in the Martin Luther King March. We don't need to keep cutting out the vans that march in the, in the, uh, Martin Luther King March and everything, so, uh, as our next city councilperson.
There's one question.
No, I'm not asking a question, just making a statement. We would like for you to make sure there's nothing else cut out of our Martin Luther King March. It is the biggest, largest march in the nation, and we want to continue it that way.
As your former city councilman, let me tell you what happens. When you get down there, it's easy to lose yourself. We've seen it the last eighteen months. People open doors for you, good morning, councilman, good afternoon, councilman. You lose yourself, you lose sight of why you were there. Don't do that, because we'll know. We've seen it the last eighteen months. When I was there, and Sister's right here, she asked me for an additional one hundred thousand dollars for private interest, am I right? I called Cheryl Stone, and she said, yes, come see me. No, Cheryl, you come see me, I'm the council. All right? They need my votes, I don't care, in District Ten, what their average home price is, what their median income is, that vote on District, in District Two counts just as much. You got to know, you got to act like it. Be strong down there, not to hear your say. Sometimes you can't negotiate, you got to know your strength. You know what you went to the table, you don't lie alone. Come to the table, because if you're not at the table, you're on the menu. So, you're going to represent us, get down there and represent us.
Thank you.
You got a question up here, uh, either way, you know.
My question is this, at the last meeting, the group said that the councilperson should not have a job, another job, and I don't know anything about legal expectations of that.
That's a great question. Of course, that's a great question. We don't need that law. You have a job, Martin Luther?
No, no.
New things, you got a job, okay? So, huh? Okay? Daughter?
Yes.
Mister?
Oh, oh, where is this?
All right, Mr. Hill.
Recently retired.
All right, and like you.
Yeah, I have, um, a state with a pretty, I live in an area that was formerly trying to grow, and what I have seen in District Two is that many times, we're focused as a city, not necessarily of the District Two, meaning the organizers of the city, is that District Two is comprised of the Near East Side, and my street has had cones and barriers that have been under construction since June. Our road stops do not have benches, so I can't really take a bus, because I can't stand up for forty minutes waiting for it. So what will you do to energize those district organizations outside of the Near East Side? Because we want them help, and we want to be a part of this district, but we haven't been included.
Thank, thank you, and that, that is a burning statement. Uh, would you ready to wrap up? What? Yes. Okay, first off, I'd like to thank all the entities stepping up like this, I know it's not easy. If you have the best of the name, I would love you to bring your best of the name, because dealing with a whole bunch of different people, a whole bunch of different needs is never a easy situation. The burning situation that I have, is that I hope that once you do, and you are ready for this, that you help, uh, foster better relationships between the San Antonio Police Department and the East Side. We should no longer look like it's a junkyard, we should no longer look like our younger brothers and sisters, or just baby moms, or a whole bunch of other stuff. We have needs, we have concerns over there too, so we need them to make sure that they protect and serve us as well. I just, the neighborhood neighborhood association presidents, presidents, come on.
I just wanted, um, to make sure that, uh, the media that's here is appreciated, and I'm hoping, I appreciate, I appreciate them, uh, uh, opening, uh, that last meeting as their talk story, because that's the only way that we're going to get, uh, attention throughout, so I appreciate the media.
All right, here's another president, right here.
President, we'll talk, President, thanks.
Thank you, James Dickerson, fellow San World Guard. One of the things I think you look at is staff nominations. Once staff representatives stands, then you have to go before the planning, the zoning, and ultimately, City Council. If you don't get the ear of City Council before, that means it becomes a done deal, because they look to the representative of each district in order to determine which way we enter each people.
Thanks to this president, right to the grace of life.
I'm surprised I get to talk, how nice.
Thirty seconds.
I'll make it quick. I think the neighborhood association group that you're trying to put together, Rose, is perfect. We need to have more of that. For the potential city councilman, I feel sorry for you in any way. First of all, parking down there at that city hall, horrendous, for people to come visit and talk to, eat with and point. I have tickets to prove. Um, but I think this forum is great, and I wish you all luck.
Thank you.
Well, they have the other office.
That's my room. Any other gentleman president? You, thank you. Hold on.
Who?
Oh!
You want me to take it?
Stop, you were bossing me around before.
I just want to say, uh, it is very important for the councilmen to get involved with our community, with the presidents of associations, uh, because since we've been getting working with the community and, uh, District Two, our crime rate in our street have diminished, reduced completely to approximately percent. It is very important that you get involved with that community, and sit down and listen. The only thing you have to do is sit down and listen to the concerns of the residents. I don't care how old they are, just sit down and listen to the residents.
Can you tell the name of your?
Uh, association, it's called the Temple of Associations, and I've been a resident of the association for three years.
Thank you, thank you so much. Again, I want to thank everybody for their participation, wishing we had more time and energy. Uh, thank you each and every one of you applicants. Now, there has been a statement out there, put out there, is there, can there be a decision of people's names to move forward? Not necessarily with the city, but there is a press conference scheduled for next week Wednesday, at the City Hall Plaza, at ten AM. Next week Wednesday, seven o'clock, at the City Council Plaza, to announce those community individuals who wants to put forward a specific name. All I would say to each and every one of you, Red, you're selected, and I, we need your engagement. We need your engagement. Our community has suffered a long time, people who's angry with one another. We've got to end that. We've got to set that aside. If this is, if this is not your time, maybe next time will be. We need your talent on boards, we need your talent to engage in the community, so we don't want to have people with attitudes, because you didn't make this cut, but it is our belief, and y'all tell me if I'm wrong, we've got some potential folks that could be our negative, uh, conversation. And so, I want, please very much, you to know that. You've been an outstanding judge, this is short of three words. So, uh...
Just to clarify for the citizens and the constituents, how are we going to get our choices forward to you, so that that can roll up on Wednesdays? Or are we all just going to go down there Wednesday and say, I like him, I like her?
No, we want it united front. Wednesday needs to be a united front. And so, the key to it is emailing, saying what your preference is. If you have a preference, email, and we will take that into consideration.
Email your address.
So make sure you sign in, we have your email, uh, so that we can e-blast out, turn to, oh, good call, the internal vote, what's going on, but, are you prepared to push your email out there?
Sure.
Okay, so he's been, he's been our reporter, so he'll be our reporter of numbers. You want to tell people your email?
Rose, Taiwan, Darwin, and I'm, from T Y R O N E, D A R D E N, and I'm, uh...
Taiwan, Darwin, and I'm, we will also email you out. If we got your email on the list, we'll put together a list server, and make sure we push it out to you, and if you're interested in participating in that, and there's a majority, we would like to report that name to the City Council as a recommendation. And we would record that, and y'all can hope for yourself too, that, again, thanks to everyone who's been here, I know we went overtime, and it was, it was valuable.
And, and thank you to, uh, Sister Sir, and, uh...
And you want me to say a last word? After this word is over.
So, here, I want to hold you, and you want to say this, and, um, Patrick Jones, that's who's here today, I want to say, in nineteen ninety-nine, Dr. Herman Walker started an association called Community Churches of Social Action, and that organization, that church has been in existence for twenty years. Dr. Walker, his vision was things of this nature, to get together churches of different denominations, and I take great pride in being a member of the Community of Churches of Social Action. The reason is, I've been pastoring right here, right here, at this church, we built this, this church, this facility eighteen years ago. This church is a man is a temple, uh, but originally, um, that's, that was the name of this church, and, um, I've been pastoring here for thirty years. And I say that because, as a result of the Community of Churches of Social Action, that organization, I would say, for about twenty years, I never really knew or engaged with other pastors of the Church of God Christ Masters, but that organization brought me in the room with pastors from AMI churches, Baptist churches, non-denominational churches, and one thing we had in common, we had a passion for the community, and we found that working together, we could do a bigger job, and I appreciate that, that, that to be able to be engaged with pastors from other denominations and other faiths that were concerned about community. I want to say to, in all of these candidates, whatever you do, when you get in that office, you make sure you always have CCSA at the table. You make sure you do that, because CCSA is an organization that incorporates over fifty pastors in this city that are not just one denomination, and they are concerned about community, and I encourage them, you make sure that we are at the table, that we get a phone call. Whatever you do, make sure CCSA is at the table. Um, Dr. Walker started that organization, Dr. Pastor Herman Price was the second leader of it, and right now, um, Dr. Dill is the, is the chairman, I'm the vice chairman of CCSA. So you remember that organization, Community Churches of Social Action. Whatever you do, you make sure that CCSA knows what you're doing, and that we are at the table. All right? Yes?
I feel for the last few weekends, that's good to have, and I'm personally, for...
All right, vice chairman of CCSA, so make sure. All right, thank you. Restating everyone, restating, and I just want to say a prayer for you. Father, I want to thank you for everyone that's here today. You pray for the community of the East Side. Give us wisdom, give us direction, order our steps, and I pray for the person that will take on, take on this position. You told us to pray for those that are leadership, and we pray for them, lead them in God, and give them direction, with the glory of Christ, for in Jesus' name. Amen. And I wish you...